Essentially each building which in many cases.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
So, just if you're joining us back, thank you for your patience. We had continued discussing because we didn't want to hold on. We are currently doing project, priority project updates and Michael is updating us on the downtown project. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. So, and so, you know, those bids will be due, I think, in a month to six weeks. I don't remember exactly. Hopefully, we'll get some good bids in. We're anticipating the work to be around $750,000. Knock on wood. And so that's one piece of good news. The second bit, which is really, really good news, is that one of the things that we've been missing in terms of a key piece of infrastructure is transformers for the project. You might remember, recall, I've, I mentioned that. Specifically, we're missing two transformers that, you know, specific specs, you know, that allows them to be underground and everything. It wasn't an Ashland issue. It was a statewide issue. And happy to say through Senate President Spilka's advocacy, I think she was an important person as part of this, we did find out that those transformers are going to be shipped on July 8th. So, again, thanks to the Senate President for, for her, for help in kind of loosening up the, the wheels to get that, to get that moving. So, that's good.
So, if I may interrupt you on that, they're being shipped on the 8th. We've had similar issues when we were doing the public safety building. Certain, certain items are going to be shipped out a certain date. Do we have any idea when we're going to receive them and when will the work begin?
Joe, nobody's guessing on those. We just, all we're saying is when they're.
Where are they shipping from?
China. So.
That answers that now. Okay. That'd be well. Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, yes. So, okay, moving on to Mendez. So, work on the fields is continuing. There has been some ongoing discussion. We've talked about it at a previous meeting with, with Concom and like an enforcement over that's currently in place and stuff. So, I'm happy to say that on.
Oh, excuse me.
On Monday, I think we've worked out an agreement to where everybody can move forward and feel comfortable with things. So, we'll do a few studies with the understanding that they'll basically serve as a baseline and not necessarily, if anything adverse comes back, it won't be basically held against the project. So, so after many meetings and months, that is over. So, Pond Street, and I know we did receive an email recently just about some, some potential rumors, I think, about the lack of, of movement happening on Pond Street. So, I did respond, but just for the general public. There has been, that project has stalled out a bit because one of the major components is doing a culvert. A pretty good-sized culvert needs to be redone over on the Market Basket side. So, that was designed and everything. When they went to go build and implement it, they found that that wasn't going to work. So, they're in the process of redesigning it now.
Not last thing.
Exactly, exactly. That, that, that is my understanding from, you know, the people that I've spoken with.
So, that culvert doesn't have any effect on taking the poles on?
No, that's another piece. And so, the utilities are working. I think it's Comcast is up next transferring the, the lines. So, that is happening as well. We'll talk about Charles Trail.
Are those all going to be underground?
No, those are not underground.
So, are they going to be on the new poles?
The new poles. Just some projects that are not necessarily what we've, what we've called priority projects, but, you know, major projects and projects of interest. So, the sidewalk on 135. So, we did get the order conditions from the Concom. So, we do have the contract. Is in place with the paving company. That's also going to be, the paving company will be doing the sidewalk work. So, and so the design's been finalized. We've actually put together the draft letter that we're going to send to residents notifying them of the work that's going to be done.
And this is a sidewalk that will go on the eastbound side from the crosswalk that we put in all the way to the community center or all, or.
Correct.
In front of them. Will it go all the way to Olive Street or where is it stopped?
To the community center.
Okay.
So. That.
And we think that that work will be done before school starts?
That, that is, it should be. It should be, yeah. So, I think, you know, some of the people might have seen updates on the Arboretum or Cadillac Paint and just the fact that, you know, we do have the paving of the parking lots done. Just wanted to clarify and make sure everybody knows that the actual trails themselves are still stoned us. It's just the parking lot that's paved. And so, a design will be done over the summer and with the hope that that will be completed and we'll start the plantings in the fall. Doesn't it look so much better than what it was? I mean, it's hard to imagine what that site was just a few years ago.
Is it something that the public can go see or not yet? Like, is it?
Yeah, they can, they can access it.
I mean, the walk, the trails are there and the parking is now, is the, is it lined yet?
I don't think it's lined yet.
Parking is still blocked off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I do know.
So, let's wait until it's lined then before, yeah, okay.
But I do know, like, residents in the area have been taking advantage.
Oh, yeah, they've been walking there. Yeah, yeah.
Which is nice. So. And then we're, just another big one that's more recent is just been the ozone filter. So, we're working on that and getting that out. Have we done the design out the bit yet?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so that major, that first major piece is done. And then Clover Road. So, the planning board process is complete and shooting for an August slash September opening.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
John's doing some work.
And I was told that there will be a ribbon cutting July 18th for.
Starbucks?
Starbucks in the afternoon. I think four o'clock is what I heard. So, yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, yes.
So, a lot of good stuff happening in town. Yeah, I mean, you kind of start adding up all these things. It's a, it's a good.
Is that market that, that's going into the old Dairy Queen, is that still moving forward in the planning board process?
That got approved, right?
That got approved?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, wow.
Good. Well, that was quick.
That was quick. So.
Yes.
Surprisingly.
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be great.
Update on the Mass Trails Grant.
Yeah, wow.
That was big.
Yeah, so a, a few months ago, we put in a, a, a grant application to the Mass Trails Department Division, if you will, for $300,000, which was the, the max that we could apply for to, for land acquisition or easement acquisition for a couple of pieces of parcel off of 126. That is part of the Upper Charles Trail. And I will be very, very honest. I thought we had a snowball's chance in hell. Just kind of given kind of where we were with the property owner. But we found out last week that we were awarded that grant, $300,000. So, we, Yolanda and I, as well as members of the Upper Charles Trail Committee, went to basically that celebration in Holliston on Friday. Have to give a lot of kudos to the Upper Charles Trail Committee and Joel specifically.
Joel Arbeidman, yep.
Joel did a ton of work on that application. He did a lot of work himself on that. So, so major, major congrats to everybody. Thanks again to Senate President Spilka and Representative Lewis for their advocacy for this project. But, so the next step is just engaging with that landowner and fin- finalizing what that looks like and.
I'm going to reach out to Joel and we're probably going to have him come to our second meeting in August to talk about, about an update and next steps and where they see things. And also sort of talk about how we want to move this project forward because there's a couple of different ways. So, that way to get people up to speed. The, the exciting thing about this, and it was very nice being at the event, is for those of you who don't know. So, our part of the Upper Charles Trail, the goal is to have a 33-mile loop that goes Ashland to Hopkinton, Hopkinton-Milford, Milford to Holliston into Sherborne, a little bit in Framingham, and then back into Ashland. So, you have that loop. That then goes to Sherborne and Framingham. So, that you then have the north and south. In Framingham, they got funding to do what they call their Chris Walsh Trail, which will go around Farm Pond, which will then connect to the Bruce Freeman Trail, which goes further north, which then connects to another trail that goes Boston out to North Hampton. The other part of that is you go from Sherborne into Holliston and into Milford. Then the goal there is to continue south from Milford so that our little trail, our Upper Charles Trail loop, will be not only part of a big structure here in Massachusetts, but in what's called the North-South Greenway. Basically, the goal is to have a trail that goes from Maine all the way to Florida in this little portion so people could hop on their bike in Maine, come down, take a loop through Ashland, come see all the great things that we have in Holliston, and then continue on their merry way south. So, that is, there's getting, there's a lot of federal, federal support and funding. There's a lot of state support and funding. A lot of people have been working on this for a while. Of course, if you don't know, one of, one of the drawbacks we have here in Ashland is we don't have that empty rail bed like Holliston did. But I think we have our, our Trails Group and we've been working on this for a while. I, I foresee it happening. It's just one of those things that's, it's going to take a little while. And if any of you have ever been at a Trails event with me, one of the things I say is we've been working on our trail actively for probably 10 years now. We did the group. Holliston had to work for 20 years. On an existing rail bed. So, we are, have half the time. We've made some good progress, but these things take time. Fortunately, right now, there's a lot of funding and support at both the state and the federal level, which was why this, getting this grant was key for us to continue the work on that project.
And Yolanda, if you don't mind, just to explain a little, because we say a lot, you know, what makes our project a little bit difficult is that we don't have an existing rail bed.
Right.
So, what makes it easier if you have an existing rail bed is twofold. So, first of all, usually you're only dealing with one property owner.
Right.
Maybe two. CSX and maybe, you know, another train-related entity, which makes, you know, whereas with us, we've got 10 or 20 that we're, that we were dealing with.
Property owners that we're trying to work with or get easements from. Certainly, purchasing the land in back of the Public Safety Building is going to help with that connection. Look at how we can do it from the cemetery up in back of the Public Safety Building up until the high school. And with this grant, getting funding so that we have the Dyke Trail off of 126 that heads east. And if you've never walked that trail, you should go check it out because it is a really cool trail. And then the goal is to go now further west. We already have it built in that we're going to cross Route 126. So, now we're going to, with, if we can make this property purchase work, we continue west from the. The Dyke, the, it's the Dyke Trail. So, you know where the paintball company is on Route 126? As you're heading north, just after it, there was always this break in the guardrail. And that's called the Dyke Trail. It takes you into Framingham and Sherborne. It's, it's an old trail. I think there used to be a trolley there. So, but it's been, you know, probably the late 1800s, early 1900s since it's been there. There's no more track. It's just the raised area for the, for the Dyke Trail. And if you follow that. It takes you from 126 into Framingham into a big CSX yard.
Rail yard, yeah.
It's a rail yard from CSX. So, Framingham is in the process of trying to work with CSX. They have some real funder, they have some real funding in Framingham to bring theirs from the Chris Walsh Trail, which is around Farm Pond. They already have a little section of their trail that goes near, where's the MWRTA road? What's that road? But it goes into downtown. So, that.
D, D, I think?
So.
I want to say, it's not Dudley.
No. What's really cool and one of the reasons I, I low about this is that our Metro West Regional Collaborative helped kick off working with MAPC. They have someone in their group, David Lutzheimer, who has been helping with these connections. And again, probably 10, nine years ago, we had a kickoff here in Town Hall where not only was it the members of the Metro West Regional Collaborative, which was the eight, you know, eight, nine units, but we brought in Holliston and Westboro and further west and further east and a little bit north to have the discussion. And so, that work is moving forward. And again, because of all this infrastructure money of wanting to improve and get people out of their cars is, is one of the reasons this project keeps moving forward. So.
Blandon Avenue.
Blandon, that's it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really cool.
So, so, yeah, obviously, great news. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And then.
Listening, Joel, thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you, Joel.
Oh, just the last thing. It wasn't on the agenda. So, Claudia Jen and I met with Framingham State Mass College Building Authority, Mass State College Building Authority and the design, design team, if you will, to talk about the Warren Barn last week too. So, had a good initial meeting.
Thank you, Claudia, for being willing to do that. Okay, now, a number of reminders now that we're back live. Let's see. Vacancies on various boards and committees. Affordable Housing Trust has a vacancy for an associate member. Conservation Commis- Committee has a vacancy. Open Space and Recreation Committee has two vacancies. Stormwater Advisory Committee has a vacancy. Sustainability Committee has a vacancy. Town Forest Committee has a vacancy for an associate member. If you are interested in any of those, you can go to the website and fill out a Talent Bank form and we will be appointing people as soon as we have some. Also, the board is seeking a resident to serve on the naming at the Public Safety Building Committee. Interested parties should complete a Talent Bank form. We'd like to have that done at our probably July meeting so that we can get the naming reviewed and move forward. We are also seeking residents to serve on the Historic District Study Committee. Interested parties should complete a Talent Bank form. And again, that's one that's going to be a pretty short lift. Free COVID tests are still available, but at Town Hall. Town Hall will be closed next week on Thursday, July 4th. Our summer meeting schedule, our next Select Board meeting will be on Wednesday, July 17th. We are having a retreat meeting on August 7th, and then we will be having another regular meeting on August 17th. Plus, based on conversation, we are going to be looking to do some joint meeting with the planning board and we will have probably two of them or different ones. So, be on the lookout for that. That is everything on our agenda. Let's do board reports. So, Makita, why don't you kick us off?
Okay, um, let's see. I think a few, a few weeks ago, I was delighted to be able to attend the Ashland Pride Celebration in the Corner Spot, run by Ashland United, really tremendous community event. Unfortunately, I had to miss the Juneteenth celebration that Area had last weekend, but I was able to roll up my sleeves and participate in the Ashland Cemetery cleanup. It was really more like digging holes, but it was, it was, to be more specific, lots of them. But, but it, that was a, a great educational opportunity to find out not just about, you know, memorial art preservation and the importance of that, but really learning about the history of the town a little bit more. So, I was really energized to be part of that event. And I know they're going to be looking for more volunteers to help with that.
Yes.
In the fall. I think that's when their next push is going to be. It was pretty hot out there.
It was a hot weekend.
But it was a lot of fun. So.
Good. Okay. Claudia?
Yep, so we had a meeting of the Mendez Building Committee recently and, you know, that project is really wrapping up quickly. They are doing a lot of site work now and finishing up the fields. Kind of very exciting to see all that come to fruition. We certainly could use some additional fields in the town. I think it was this week they were scheduling a walkthrough to just, just check on the status of everything before we come up to basically a year since completion, in which case a lot of the warranties would be potentially expiring. So, they, they kind of, you know, do that to make sure everything's what it should be at this point in time. Mike mentioned about the Warren Barn. That certainly is exciting up there to, to have like Framingham State partnering with us and, and certainly, you know, they're making so many changes up there in terms of what they've made available to the community members. They have a little restaurant, Henry's Place. They have a very small membership fee. I think it's about $120 a year, something like that. And 150 maybe. And includes, you know, the ability to use the pickleball courts, to use the, the beach area and some of the boats and kayaks, et cetera. So, that's exciting what they're, they're doing up there. And then on Saturday, I was able to participate in our Select Board Town, Town Meeting. And the Juneteenth, the event. So, that was really, really an enjoyable morning. Enjoyed hearing the speakers and they had some musicians that were very talented and so that was a great day. So, I guess that's it for me. Okay, Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To piggyback what Claudia just said, participated at the Farmers Market Select Board Table. It was a lot of, it was very interesting throughout the, throughout the stay there. I actually stayed till, till the end because it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. Loved, loved the music. I thought I was in Animal Kingdom at Disney because of the music. I mean.
Yeah, definitely.
It was phenomenal. And, and it's, and watching the kids as they're walking by, they were dancing and they were celebrating. It was just a lot, a lot of fun. It was fantastic. I, I loved it immensely. The interesting thing about being at the table, we had about 10 to 15 people throughout the day stop. And one of the major concerns of discussion that they brought up was the Boraja 40B projects that are coming into town and what can Ashland do to prevent it. Explain to them, there's not much we can do other than write letters to Mass Housing and to try to get them to understand where we're at and the concerns that we all have. And one gentleman, didn't want to talk about the 40B project. He was really concerned about waste management and asked about trash pickup and is there any current written action in the current contract that would penalize waste management for this repeated missing of trash pickup throughout the community? And I asked, I told him, I said, you know what? I don't know. I really don't know. But I'll find out and we'll, we'll ask. So, is there, is there something? I, I don't know.
Yeah, there is, there is, there's in their, sorry. In their contract, there's a pretty well outlined and detailed list of penalties and we have, we have penalized them before. I want to say six months ago when it got really, really bad. I think they ended up racking up about $20,000 in what we'll call fines. And their performance turned around a bit. And, but lately, we've been very, 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 I think, discouraged with kind of where the performance is going. And so, actually, this past Thursday and Friday, there were a couple missed pickups. I instructed Doug to find them.
And I think there was a concern, there was no mention that trash pickup would be delayed because of the holiday.
That was confusing this past week.
It was very confusing. So, a lot of the residents, and I know in my neighborhood, some didn't put their, their trash out. And sure enough, waste management showed up, you know, so their trash wasn't picked up and they, you know, they get a phone call, what, what are we going to do? I said, well, give the DPW a call, you know, when they're open on, on, on Friday. And so, you know.
You can have them call, my husband, who is the family, he lets everybody know if trash is going to be delayed. We get emails that go out to all the family members. They can get put on his list.
Remember to think, Claudia brought this up. I did not bring this up. Claudia did.
He's happy to report that.
It was, it was definitely confusing this past week.
It was a little, it was a little confusing.
Because there was no delay.
Right.
For trash. And Wednesday was a national holiday. So, I would have expected trash to be delayed by a day.
Right.
And it wasn't.
And it was not.
They picked up on Wednesday.
So, they're pretty, they're pretty clear in the flyer that they put out.
We have it posted, right?
Yeah, of what holidays are considered.
And I think with this being a new one, people might have been confused.
And lastly, with respect to the Farmers Market, being there for the table, we had several new residents come up and introduce themselves.
Yeah.
And they were, they were ecstatic about the town. They didn't realize that Ashland offered so many different variety of opportunities and events for them. And, and they, they said, this is a lot better than where we came from. And they were very happy. They look forward to staying here in town for quite some time and they were very, very pleased. And we all welcomed them to, to Ashland. And a big shout out to Bill Gath, who last Tuesday received the Melvin Jones Award. He, that is the highest award that the Ashland Lions can bestow. Melvin Jones was the international founder of the, of the Lions in the United States. So, congratulations, Bill. And during this heat advisory, I just would like to remind everybody to check on their senior citizens if they live in the area. Make sure they're okay. Make sure they have, you know, a, a cooling area or provide a, a ride to a cooling station or center that's, that's made available through the town.
Community center.
Correct. Which is our community center here and a library. So, and, and make sure they have plenty of water to stay hydrated. And AOC, I mean, ACO also advises us to make sure that our furry friends are also in the shade or inside where it's cool and keep them hydrated as well. Traffic Study Committee would let, will met on the 18th and we, that's many concerns that the residents have. We would love to be able to put sidewalks and crosswalks on every single street of the row in town, but that's not going to happen because of budgetary issues. And we are, we are working to the best of our ability, but everything comes down to human nature. You know, it's people that drive, that drive fast. They don't pay attention to the signs. You know, we have signs up, not through a white, but people still go through it anyway because they don't want to be delayed. And it's very frustrating, extremely frustrating. So, bear with us. We're working on it. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Brandy?
I'll be pretty quick. I just wanted to thank the Ashland Farmers Market and Area for a really great Juneteenth program. It was, it was great to, to, to be there on behalf of our board. And, you know, the table that we had was, thank you guys for, for pitching in on, on office hours at the Farmers Market. I think the way the, it, it, like Joe said, it's a really great way for people to come and talk to us, which is, which is, you know, it's, it's a good opportunity. I did want to talk a little bit about the, our next dates at the Farmers Market, just so we can make sure that we're all on the same page. Generally, we're trying to do like one a month. And the July date, I know that the, I think it was the 13th or the 12th or whatever that date. 13th. The 13th and the 20th were the two dates that I had floated by. The Farmers Market came back and said they couldn't do the 13th. So, and I know a lot of folks can't do the 20th. Do we want to look at the 27th? Or do we want to just do the August date, the August 10th? Because with the, with the Fourth of July holiday and everything in there, like I, I'm just, so I wanted to just see what you guys thought about that. Okay. I know summer's hard. Saturdays are hard.
The other thing I'd like to recommend is maybe we reach out to a couple, like, School Committee and Planning Board and say, hey, we're getting the community tent for one of these dates. Does you guys want to join us? Because that could give us different coverage. I don't, because I don't know if they're actively doing that.
We can do that.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's, that's great. And that way, there's some, there's coverage and there's actually more folks that people can come up and.
Right.
Interact with.
Yeah.
So, do we want to tentatively think to do maybe that, that July 20th date and then ask, I can reach out to, to.
Right, you know, just send it, send it out to, to their whole board, to both planning and school committee and say, hey, we're looking to do a town tent. Do you guys want to join us? For part of it, all of it, whoever wants to show up.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. That sounds good. All right, so. Okay. And then we'll plan on August 10th as well as the next date. Okay. And just to piggyback on what you guys were talking about with the, with the community club over at Framingham State, this upcoming Sunday is an Ashland Day. So.
It's the second one.
Yeah, so I hadn't seen the thing about the first one. And then I was like, oh, it's a, so it's a good opportunity to go test it out. So, if you guys want to go rent kayaks or, I think.
It's on Sunday?
This next Sunday. I think it's like 10 to 4 or something like that.
I saw that.
You have to sign up for it, but you can try out like stand-up paddleboards and stuff like that, which I always am scared about, but. I always am scared about, but, but it, they have all sorts of stuff over there, pickleball and tennis and things like that.
I'll try that stand-up paddleboard, Brandy, with you, if you, if you're looking for
A buddy?
A buddy to be adventurous with.
All right, deal.
Are both of you on the same board, holding on?
Moral support, moral support.
Probably gonna be a scenario.
Yeah, so.
Resting on my knees, there's no standing.
And then just the only other thing, when, when Joe and I were at the, the table at the Farmers Market, our friend David Sannacandro came over and was talking to us, and David's such a great guy. And he watches our, he watches our meetings, and so he even records them, so I, he says to us all the time that he sees us on TV, so I, I told him we'd give him a shout out. Yeah.
There you go.
So David, we know you're watching, and thank you for, for hanging in there with us, so good to see you last weekend.
Great.
And that's it.
Okay. Couple things, we received a letter from Comcast, and I just wanted to read it to the public so you're aware. As part of their ongoing commitment to keep our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV services, we wanted to notify you that the PAC twelve network is seizing operation on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, so as a result, the PAC twelve network will no longer be available as part of the Comcast lineup, so if you watch that, I don't know if you do. They've also then implemented a channel slate change, and you can check that out to keep our customers informed during this period. And you are getting notified of this in your statement, but I figured we could read it here as well.
Which means you'll probably see a slight decrease in your bill, probably.
Yeah, no. Couple things, so legislative event with Metro West Regional Collaborative happened on June fourteenth. It seems like forever ago, was a great event, was so fun to have a lot of different communities together and discuss. We didn't have that many legislators, because they were dealing with budgets still, but it was, it was a good event. Claudia touched base on the Mendes, I don't have to do that. Brandy talked about Ashland Day at the University Club. Last day of school was, was June eighteenth, so congratulations to everyone who finished the school year and be safe and sound until through your summer. Two other updates for in, issues around town, so at the Outdoor YMCA Center, they now have outdoor new pickleball courts. And there is a ribbon cutting happening for that on Thursday. And then if you love Halloween, and you enjoy acting, or even just want to give your hand at acting, the program, there's a, a new event, it started last year called The Haunt. It is a fundraiser between the Hopkinton Center for the Arts and the YM, Metro West YMCA. And they are holding auditions on Sunday for people who would like to go, it's a two-weekend event in the end of October. You don't have to commit to both weekends, but if you love Halloween and you want to have an opportunity, the event this year is a wedding at Deadwoodville, where they have a more, I think it's a mortal, the groom is mortal and the bride is immortal, so some of the signs have been around town.
What is this event, like, so, so is it like an acting opportunity, is it like
It's an acting, it's an acting and, and or dance opportunity.
Got it.
You audition to be a witch, or?
You audition to be one of the members of the town, so you could be part of the church, you could be a bridesmaid, you could be, they have, so when they did it last year, they had a doll shop, they had a town hall, they had an electric chair, they had a laundry, they had Chops, Chops Diner. And because it was out on the YMCA property, they had their, their camp, and someone died at camp, and so yeah, so if you enjoy Halloween and you want to participate, they are looking for a lot of volunteers, because as I said, it's a two-weekend endeavor this year, and they're looking for people, you don't have to commit to both weekends. So, but you can go to HCA, their website, and there are some signs around town talking about it. And that's all that I have, so our next meeting will be on Wednesday, July seventeenth. So happy Fourth of July, be safe with your friends and family, be aware of our first responders who are gonna be out there keeping us all safe.
One, one quick
Yes, go ahead, Joel.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to bring up that our next summer concert is gonna be July nineteenth. It's a town, Metro West favorite band, it's Back Pages, they're very, very good, I'm sure you've heard them before. The folks that know Inky Fair and his band, that's who they are, come and enjoy them. Our last concert, was our first concert last Tuesday, we had about a hundred and twenty-five people show up for the first one, which was very nice, it went well.
That's great.
So we appreciate that, and starting next week, July fifth, Ashland will be selling its favorite corn.
Oh, nice.
Be ready to see that at Lucky Five, so.
Okay.
I have a quick question just about trash fines, where, where does that money go when we find them?
So Claudia, it's technically not a, it's, it's not done as a fine, it's actually done as a withholding of payment? So like, so they sent us an invoice of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, and let's just say they've racked up twenty thousand in fines. You know, we would send them eighty thousand dollars with the understanding.
I was thinking maybe we'd give everybody a free bag or something.
I have one more point.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, with the July fourth weekend coming up, I just wanted to remind folks that in Massachusetts, fireworks are illegal, so I, I think that, you know, with pets and kids and such, you know, just be careful and be safe. Take the chair as words to heart, but also remember that those fireworks are something that we want to keep out of the out of little hands especially, but really out of everybody's hands, or you might lose a hand, so.
And there's certainly enough places that are doing fireworks.
Oh, so many events.
Holliston is doing stuff.
June twenty-eighth in Framingham.
June twenty-eighth, yes, they're doing something. M-80s belong in New Hampshire.
Yes, they do. And thank you to the three Life Scouts that are in our audience tonight, along with their sponsor, Mrs. Carmichael, thank you very much. I learned something tonight, that a Life Scout is the next step before Eagle Scout. And I just learned that tonight, so congratulations to you three, thank you. That is cool.
Great, if I can get a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you for joining us, sorry for the hiccup with power outages, not much we can do about that. And we will see you again at our next Select Board meeting on Wednesday, July seventeenth, but I'm sure we'll see you out and about at either the Farmers Market or other great events. Stay safe, and we'll see you all in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.